Welcome to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, April 3rd, 2017. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times on the town's information channel over the next week. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce you to my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Hello, everyone.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening, y'all.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ted Stamblidis.
Good evening, y'all.
And to his right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Commander Matthew Behrens of the U.S. Navy to please come up and offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure for me to be here. As a Navy guy, I would never have stumbled upon the town of Lexington. There's not much Navy around, as everyone knows, but surrounded by the Army, we happened to get orders here about a year and a half ago. Small chaplain schoolhouse on Fort Jackson, so that's where I get to serve. Our family quickly fell in love with this town. And as I mentioned to you when I ran into the airport a few weeks ago, you know, we would like, someday we're gonna have to take the uniform off, like to eventually retire here. So keep up the good work with everything that you guys are doing. We'll continue to pray for you as things go forward. And with that, may I offer the invocation prayer. As you are able, would you join me?
Yes.
God, how unspeakably wonderful it is for us to know that you love us and you care deeply for all our concerns. We know that all authority has been established by you to accomplish your purposes. We read in your scriptures that we are to pray for rulers and their governments to rule well. And Lord, I pray that now for the leaders of this city council, for the decisions they are making, and for the people in the town of Lexington. Give them the gift of wisdom, Lord. They need that in order to do your will. Enable them with strength and courage to make difficult decisions and to accomplish great things. And when they are successful, I pray they would give you all the glory. Lord, you have made us for yourself, and our hearts will be restless until they find rest in you. We can never be satisfied without you, so may we never cease to thirst for you through prayer and a personal relationship with you. Thank you for your unfathomable love. We pray these things in your always faithful and loving name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Commander, thank you very much for being with us, and I appreciate you doing that At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Todd Cornes if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and I would like to report on our executive session this evening. During our executive session, we had four contractual issues. We had a contractual issue regarding a multi-jurisdictional agreement. We had a contractual issue related to a proposed utilities contract. We had discussion of licensing issues for a proposed contract. And we had discussion of a potential MOU with the South Carolina Department of Transportation. Also tonight, we had one legal issue, and it was an update on pending litigation. No vote was taken. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's report?
So moved.
Councilmember Stamblidis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving into deletions on the agenda, are there any deletions of items on tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, move to send item number six back to the Planning Commission for further discussion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion to move, I'm sorry, makes a suggestion to delete item number six off the agenda, Madam Clerk. And that is under new business. Any other comments? Any other deletions on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none. Moving on, we'll move into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes for council's regular meeting on March 6th and work session on March 20th, 2017 were provided in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections for regular council meeting, March 6th, 2017, and work session, March 20th, 2017? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Councilmember Manus seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. At this time, we will move into presentations. Our first presentation of tonight is a proclamation designating April 4th as Mayor and County Day of Recognition for National Service, presented by Councilmember Ted Stamblidis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the town election designated April 4th, 2017, as Mayor and County Day of Recognition for National Service. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services shares a priority with county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and mayors and county officials across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor and the County Recognition Day for National Service on April 4th, 2017. Now therefore, it is to be proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, is hereby declared National Service Recognition Day. And we encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteerism in our town and to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their community. Dated this third day on April 2017, Mayor Steve McDougall. And I think there's nobody here to receive it, so we'll be mailing this to Washington, DC, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Stamblidis, thank you very much. Moving into our next proclamation, is there anyone here for the Autism Awareness Month? If you would, please come forward to the microphone. We'd like to read a proclamation for you. This is our proclamation designating April 2017 as Autism Awareness Month, presented by Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas autism is a persuasive developmental disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavior skills of those affected by it, and whereas as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 68 children nationally. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it is often possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support and accommodation services to ensure their health and safety and to support families as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism presents. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina hereby proclaim April 2017 as Autism Awareness Month and encourage all citizens and businesses to shine a blue light during the month of April to encourage awareness and support of those whose lives are touched by autism. Dated this third day of April 2017, Steve McDougall, Mayor. And I believe Ms. Clickley's here?
Anything you'd like to say, you go right ahead.
I would just like to thank everyone for recognizing all of the families that we serve at Carolina Behavior and Beyond. We're on Main Street now. We're new business, and we serve over 200 children, birth to five for early intervention. And a very significant amount of our families that we serve are dealing with autism every day, so we really appreciate y'all bringing some awareness to that. So, thank you.
Good. Who's that young man? I'll say hey to him.
This is my brother, Reuben.
Hey, Reuben. Hey. Thank you for being with us tonight.
People want tigers.
Yeah? Come on, we wanna get a picture with y'all up here. Is that okay?
People want tigers.
Did you say go Tigers?
Detroit Tigers.
Detroit Tigers, okay.
Hey, Reuben. Can you smile? Hey, Reuben, can you give me a thumbs up?
Thank you very much for being with us. Yeah. Our next presentation is a proclamation declaring Saturday, April 22nd, as Walk Like Mad Day, presented by Councilmember Steve Baker. Mr. Baker?
Whereas Mothers Against Drunk Driving MAD is the largest, the nation's largest nonprofit organization, working to protect families from drunk driving and underage drinking. And whereas, as one of the largest victim services groups in the United States, MAD also supports drunk and drug-driving victims and survivors at no charge, serving one person every 8.6 minutes through local MAD victim advocates. And whereas, Walk Like MAD is a signature fundraising event to help raise both awareness and funds to eliminate drunk driving. And whereas, last year, tens of thousands of people in over 80 cities across the nation participated and raised almost $3 million to provide programs and services at no cost. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina hereby proclaim that April 22, 2017, is Walk Like MAD Day in the town of Lexington and encourage all citizens to support efforts for MAD's life-saving mission to keep our families and communities safe. Dated this third day of April 2017, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you very much for doing this. This is a 100% preventable crime, and it has taken many of our residents here in Lexington County. Two children come to mind that I was, I'm close with their families. One is Emma Longstreet, and one is Brandon Mann. These children deserve to live and grow up in this wonderful community that we live in. It's my honor to serve the victims of this preventable crime, and it is really, I can't, we can't thank you enough for what you do. Your support means everything to us, and we hope that one day, our mission of no more victims will be recognized and will be, will put me out of my job. I would love to, love to be put out of my job, that one day I don't ever have to stand in court or stand by a casket with a family as they go through and grieve one of the most unbelievable experiences of their lives. So thank you so very much. It is very appreciated.
Well, you're welcome. We wish you a lot of luck on April 22nd.
Thank you.
As we walk like mad.
Thank you.
Very good. We'd like to get a picture if you don't mind.
You guys please come out. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. That concludes our presentations. At this time, we will move into a vision plan update. Vision plan update for April 2017, the Lexington Live Concert Series. The town of Lexington hosts Lexington Live Spring Concert Series, presented by Lexington Medical Center. The concerts will take place at the Ice House Amphitheater, which is located at 107 West Main Street, which was just named the 2017 Municipal Association of South Carolina Achievement Award winner. That's fantastic. All concerts are on Thursday evenings, beginning at 6:30 PM. The first concert, April 13th, will be The Men of Distinction. April 20th will be a band called Soul Fusion. April 27th is The Finesse Band. May 4th is Kids Night at Amphitheater, is Liquid Pleasure is the name of the band. May 11th is The Right to Party. And May 18th, we welcome back the opening act of the amphitheater, The Root Doctors. For more information on these events or for a full calendar of events, please visit the That's all I have for a vision plan update at this time. We will now hear from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston for a traffic update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A new median in drainage improvements are being installed on Sunset Boulevard at Hope Ferry Road in association with a new Lowe's grocery store. This work is occurring after 7:00 PM. Please anticipate delays and use extra caution around this area when traveling. Roadwork is also ongoing at North Woods Road near 378 and SC 6. A new right turn lane and sidewalks are being constructed. Please use extra caution around this area. The Phase 1 Adaptive Traffic Signal Project is nearing the end, with all new signals becoming fully adapted by the end of April.
Yay.
The next traffic committee meeting will be this Wednesday, April 5th, at 8:00 AM in the third floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 359-1027.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 3420-01-041, located at 105 Pilgrim Point Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Moving on to item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number five, excuse me, 4200-09-030, and 028, and 045, and 099, and 006, located at 1205 Old Cherokee Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Moving on, item number three, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 5497-02-013, located at 5205 Augusta Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number four, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 5300-02-036, located at 309 Bar Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 3420-01-041, located at 105 Pilgrim Point Drive. Councilmember Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Linda and George G. own a lot located at 105 Pilgrim Point Drive and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential. Pilgrim Point Drive and Pilgrim Point Court are classified as RL 6 roads. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this property. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stamblidis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ted Stamblidis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 4200-09-030, 028, 045, 099, and 006, located at 1205 Old Cherokee Road. Councilmember Stamblidis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mount Horb United Methodist Chareds owns 87.7 acres on five parcels located at 1205 Old Cherokee Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, or PR, and protected residential 2, PR 2. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road, and Foxclan Road has not been classified. The Planning Commission reviewed the annexation during this February, during their February meeting, and recommended limited commercial zoning for the properties. The commission also recommended that the classification of Old Cherokee Road remain a collector road and recommended classifying Foxclan Road as a local road. Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I'd like to make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Stamblidis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our third item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 5497-02-013, located at 5205 Augusta Road. Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lynn George Addy owns 3.8 acres located at 5205 Augusta Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A small office is located on the property. Properties in town near this one are zone-general commercial and high-density residential. Augusta Road is classified as an arterial road, and Carlin Avenue is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the property and recommended that the road classifications remain the same. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our last item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 5300-02-036, located at 309 Bar Road. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The South Carolina Department of Education owns 10.3 acres located at 309 Bar Road. They have petitioned to annex the property. The school bus maintenance facility is located on the site. Properties in the town near this one are zone-limited commercial. Bar Road is classified as collector road, and Satchel Road is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for the property with the continuation of the existing road classification for Bar and Satchel Roads. Make a motion for final approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Councilmember Manus seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving into new business, from Councilmember Steve Baker, resolution to annex town-owned property at 237 Cascade Court. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff is asking that the town council consider annexing town-owned property at 237 Cascade Court. The parcel consists of 1.19 acres of land and is the site of the town's Mill Creek Pump Station. The attached resolution must be approved to begin the annexation process. I would like to make a motion for approval of resolution to annex 1.19 acres of town-owned property at 237 Cascade Court.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Councilmember Manus seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. At this time, we will hear the new business consent agenda from Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Items C1 through C10 involve annexations of a portion of two parcels as well as all of eight other parcels. Approximately 418 acres of property are included with these annexations. All parcels are either related to or adjacent to the TIF district that is under consideration. Development that has been proposed on these parcels includes 227-acre site that is planned to have a mixture of uses, including 312 single-family homes and a 308-unit apartment complex, a 115-acre conservation easement, as well as small, limited, or office commercial areas. Other major aspects of these annexations include 32.6-acre parcel that is currently under development with 58 single-family homes and the 146-acre River Bluff High School property. The Planning Commission will review these annexations during their April meeting to provide recommendations on the zoning of the properties and the road classification of Corley Mill Road. I make a motion for first reading approval of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Poole, we'd like, if you'd like to say something at this point about the TIF district and the work that went into this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment and say, you know, that you guys, council knows, a lot of work goes in behind the scenes on things like this. This is a, this TIF district and the concept has been under work and discussion at the town for over 10 months at this point. And I'd really like to say a thank you to Stuart Ford, Brad Cunningham, and John Hanson, who are part of the annexation team that we meet monthly. And this is kind of a fruition of that work, and I thought it was a good opportunity to give them an attaboy, because this is a big deal.
It's a very big deal, and I think we talked earlier, this is more property that we're annexing in one night tonight than we have in the last two years. Is that correct, John?
Pretty close.
Yeah. So fantastic job. Thank y'all very much, and it is a great time to do this. Stuart, Brad, John, Britt, thank y'all very much. Great job.
And many others, but those were the big ones.
Any other discussion? We have a motion for first reading and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. At this time, we will move into item number two of new business from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston, first reading of an ordinance approving a planned unit development off of Corley Mill Road. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The attached document describes a proposed planned unit development, PUD, off of Corley Mill Road. The PUD is part of a development agreement in TIF district planned for the area. A planned unit development generally consists of a tract or tracts of land planned and developed as a whole in a single development stage or phase series of development stages according to an approved PUD master plan. The intent of the PUD is explained in the Town Code of Ordinance as follows. 154.08.01 intent. A, the intent of a planned development is to better bridge the inherent differences between residential and non-residential uses and to better accommodate change within those areas of the town of Lexington. Where due to economics or other factors responsible for change, potentially incompatible development could compromise property, values, or adversely impact existing land use, transportation facilities, or infrastructure. Number B is, I mean, B is, through the planned development advocated by 154.08.01 through 154.08.14, it is possible to ameliorate differences between potentially incompatible uses of exacting concessions and conditions as necessary to achieve land use compatibility. First reading, I make a motion for first reading of an ordinance approving the planned unit development.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion for first reading approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stamblidis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ted Stamblidis. First reading of an ordinance approving a development agreement off- First reading of an ordinance approving a development agreement off of Corley Mill Road. Councilmember Ted Stamblitis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. The attached document describes a proposed development agreement to be executed in conjunction with the planned unit development, or PUD, off of Corley Mill Road. Both the PUD and the development agreement must be authorized by ordinance of Town Council. Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to make the motion for first reading approval of an ordinance approving the development agreement.
Councilmember Stamblitis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carons. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 4200-02-086 located at one-three-zero Nightingale Court. Councilmember Todd Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. McGwin Homes LLC owns point seven-nine acres located at one-thirty Nightingale Court and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one is zoned Protected Residential and Protected Residential Two. Nightingale Court is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended Protected Residential zoning for the property and Local Road classification for Nightingale Court. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Carons makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 4200-09-005 located at two-nine-four Fox Glen Road. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Krista Nichols owns one point one acres located at two-ninety-four Fox Glen Road and has petitioned to annex a portion of the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one have been recommended to be zoned limited commercial. Old Cherokee Road is classified as collector road and Fox Glen has been recommended to be classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their March meeting and recommended Protected Residential zoning for the property and the same road classifications for Old Cherokee Road as well as Fox Glen Road. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manus seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Carons.
I'm just trying to, maybe John or somebody can help me out with this annexation because it's one acre plot and looks like point oh five is being annexed at the front. Can you help me out?
Yes, sir. That, that's a strip across the front. That home, we don't service and we don't provide any services to, so they're under no obligation to annex. However, there's a fairly large development under construction that this makes us adjacent to, so it's a, it's a connecting annexation, if you will. And the owner was willing to sign it, but not for the entire parcel. Because she had no obligation to.
Correct. And that gets us adjacent to?
It brings us to the Sterling Bridge development, which is a residential development as well as, as well as some potential commercial development, which is in, in the works, as well as the New Providence Elementary School. It, it's about another hundred acres we've been working on and it ties into that. And it also puts us on Old Chapin as well as Old Cherokee, so it's good positioning.
So did we initiate this?
We did. Well, we made the developer aware that there was a path if he wanted to follow it, and he did.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 4200-02-085 located at one-three-six Nightingale Court. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christopher and Sherry Tracy own point seven-nine acres located at one-three-six Nightingale Court and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in the town near this one are zoned Protected Residential and Protected Residential Two. Nightingale Court is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their April meeting to provide a recommendation on the zoning and road classification. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stamblitis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. First reading of an ordinance rezoning of one-two-four Vera Road. Councilmember Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Greg Wingard requested to rezone one-twenty-four Vera Road from Protected Residential to Industrial. The request is being made to allow the property to be used for a towing service drop yard. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial. Properties across the street from this one are zoned industrial. The Planning Commission reviewed this request during their March meeting and recommended against the zoning change. I make a motion for first reading approval to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? I, I'd like to ask a question. If the properties in town were zoned general commercial and the properties across the street were zoned industrial, why did we not recommend? Why did we recommend against, if anybody could answer that for me? It just seems if, if we have property near and across the street, I'd just like an explanation. I wasn't at your meeting and I, I'm sorry, I didn't get the update from our liaison. That's my fault, but since you're here, if you don't mind?
No, no problem, no problem, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Keith Frost, the Planning Commission Chair. We, we did have some discussion at our meeting. In the comprehensive plan, we've identified areas and corridors where you have commercial development, you have industrial development, you have residential development. As part of that planning and land use guide, we try to buffer our residential from heavy commercial and industrial. Highway six has been identified. It has some residential. We have a couple residents that are here. And we have commercial. Going back to Vera Road is commercial. Once you cross Vera Road, you get into the industrial area. And we, as a Planning Commission, thought that was a good buffer, that we would use Vera Road as that dividing line between your commercial and your industrial activities. That, coupled with the concerns that the adjacent residents had, we felt like that was the prudent thing to do.
Very good. You mentioned there were some homeowners here. Are they, do you know them? Can you point them out? Would y'all like to step forward and say anything?
Absolutely.
Yes, please come forward. If you don't mind, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. I am Mary Stokes Clark, and I own the property at one-twenty-four South Vera Road. And I was trying to sell it, and this young man was interested in purchasing it for industrial use. Because it's a mobile home on it now, being rented out.
Yes.
But everything on that back street of Vera Road is all commercial or industrial.
Okay, you're talking about Mr. Wingard was gonna buy it from you?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Clark. Yes, sir, if you would just state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Schumpert, ten-ten Gervais Street. Our company, Next Home Specialist, has marketed the property. We had no idea that, you know, when we marketed it, it would be a problem to rezone it. Mr. Wingard is familiar with rezoning, has done it in the past.
Right.
I mean, this, this area is industrial. There's no way around it. Everything surrounding it, you know, pulled all the tax maps. Everything around it is industrial. These folks are, even next door where the lady, I think, might have had some concern, she's residential but zoned commercial. I mean, everyone is commercial. So as far as the buffer, I don't see it, except that our client has already been damaged by all the industrial and can't sell now as a residential. No one would be interested or as interested to live there as a residential when it's surrounded commercial. So she's already taken the brunt of the hit, and now we can't get rid of it for her for its, its practical use.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it might be a good-
Yes, sir, Mr. Stamblitis.
It might be a good idea to revisit this comprehensive plan specifically for this issue right here. If it's industrial all around and, I mean, they're right, it would be very difficult to sell the property as a residential home. I don't think anybody would want to live there, but that's just my opinion. So it might be a good idea, just for the sake of revisiting this comprehensive plan, and maybe helping the residents to be compensated on this property properly. Just a thought. Any, any discussion on that or any thought of revisiting or maybe from the chairman, we could hear some discussion?
And I would love to address that because if, if you listen to what I said the first time, it's not industrial all the way around this project. Across the street begins the industrial activities. Everything on the north side of this road towards Highway six is commercial. If, if it was a commercial request, I don't think we would be here having this discussion. It is an industrial request. Anything, as you all know, anything that you want to do can go into industrial activity. I don't know that we want that on, next to the corridor on Highway six and next to, they've got the architectural firm or the engineering firm that just built a brand-new nice building next door. And we do have some residents there. Whether there's own commercial, there are still residents. So it's not industrial all the way around this. It is industrial across the street.
I see, thank you.
And, and that's the way we stage things as we go. We go from residential to commercial to industrial, so you have to have those buffer zones. So that's, again, that was the reason we, we made the decision we did.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stamblitis.
Sir, I didn't get your name, real estate agent and the owner of the property. You can ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes, I'm Mary Stokes Clark.
Yes, ma'am. Come on, he wants to ask you a question, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Clark, and your name, the agent?
Thomas.
Mr. Thomas. Would your proposed project not fit on this commercial piece of property? Who are zoned commercial?
Mr. Wingard, he says he needs to be zoned industrial for the towing, towing yard.
And a towing yard is not allowed on a commercial piece of property? No?
No, sir.
Okay. I apologize. But one more question. If you were to market it as commercial, don't you think you can sell the property still? I mean, it's a very nice location and commercially speaking, I think it would still be attractive.
Yes, absolutely.
So this is not the only possibility of the-
We would certainly have to move forward in getting it rezoned commercial regardless. It's the only residential piece that I've seen, heard the assessor's website, that is still residential.
But once you get it rezoned commercial, sorry to interrupt, I apologize, then it is marketable.
Currently, for this buyer, that would not work, but we certainly wouldn't need it to be rezoned commercial to market it.
Okay. Would you feel comfortable in rezoning in, in, in commercial to go and get that out of the way so you can market it properly?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So it's not all lost, then there's a possibility you could still sell the property and, and recover at least close to what you'd like for your asking price?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Lexington's a growing market. I don't think you're gonna have any problem selling this property. This is a hot area and I think you'll, Mrs. Clark, I think you will sell the property and I think you'll recover close to what you'd like for that property. So we wish you the best. We'll try to help you out wherever we can. We have a very progressive planning commission, they'll help you out as well.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
I'd like to recuse myself from voting for this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker is recused. Yes, sir, Mr. Poole.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, kind of a point of order. The motion on the floor is to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, and so a yes vote would be a no, not to not allow the rezoning. And I'd like to put out there, it sounds like the owner may wish for it to go back to the Planning Commission to be reviewed as commercial and maybe that way they wouldn't have to go through the process again, even though the Planning Commission would have to hear the item again. Because what I heard the Planning Commission Chair was, was that he thought the Planning Commission would be supportive of that. So that, that's an option.
Okay.
And it may save the owner some trouble in the future.
Is everyone clear with that statement?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, you want to ask Ms. Clark if she'd like to send it back to Planning Commission?
You are welcome to ask that question, yes, sir.
Ms. Clark, would you like to send it back to Planning Commission before we vote it down?
Yes, sir.
And let it go back and maybe send it back through commercial instead of industrial?
That is correct.
Okay. I would move my second.
Go ahead, Ms. Manus.
I would like to change my motion to, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds that motion to send this back to Planning Commission. All those in favor, please raise-
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend that. To send it back for commercial, request for commercial reclassification, correct? Just to finish that sentence?
Mr. Stamblitis, I don't think we can tell Planning Commission what to do. We're sending it back to Planning Commission for them to make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I stand corrected.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have a six vote and one recu- recused. Thank you. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ted Stamblitis. First reading of an ordinance amending of section one-three-two dash zero-one of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances regarding disorderly persons. Councilmember Ted Stamblitis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Staff is asking the Town Council to consider amending one-three-two point oh one of the Town Code of Ordinances to read as attached. The suggested revisions are underlined, the revisions are suggested as to make the ordinance more clearly enforceable in a municipal court in certain situations. I'd like to make a motion for first reading of an ordinance amending one-three-two point oh one of the Town Lexington Code ordinance.
Councilmember Stamblitis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance to enter into intergovernmental agreement with Lexington School District One. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town is currently in the process of establishing a tax increment finance in TIF district in the Corley Mill Road area. The required redevelopment plan has been presented to the various taxing authorities. Lexington School District One has agreed to participate subject to a proposed intergovernmental agreement, and it's attached. I make a motion for first reading approval of ordinance to enter an intergovernmental agreement with Lexington School District One.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carons seconds the motion. Any further discussion? You were handed a packet at the beginning of this meeting, and that is the intergovernmental agreement, if you would like to look at or have any questions at this time. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. Title VI policy. Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In an effort to maintain its eligibility for federal funding and grants, the SCDOT is asking the Town of Lexington to adopt the attached Title VI policy. The policy goal was to ensure that minorities and those of limited English proficiency receive adequate opportunity to bid on these contracts. It is suggested that a Title VI liaison or designee be appointed to satisfy SCDOT requirements. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carons. Boards and commissions appointments application. Councilmember Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the-
I'm not quite sure what that is, Mr. Carons, but go right ahead.
Is there a dog up under here somewhere? All right, here we go. At the February 21st and March 20th, 2017 work sessions, council discussed changes to the application for boards and commissions appointments. The attached copy shows the proposed changes of the form in red, and they include revisions to the opening paragraph, a question regarding participation in recent elections, a question regarding involvement in the Lexington community. Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask for council approval of these revisions.
Councilmember Carons makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
Just for anyone who's curious what this is about, more involvement, for the folks who are volunteering to be involved in our commissions and councils and whatnot, so basically, instead of them just filling out an application, we do a little bit more investigating about what they're trying to do. So, that's what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Madam Clerk, thank you for your work on that, and we'll move into item number 13. Our next item of new business is from councilmember Ron Williams. Mineral Springs Road relocation study. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2014, the Town of Lexington sought the funds from the Lexington County penny sales tax for relocating a portion of Mineral Springs Road to the intersection of Sunset Boulevard and Hope Ferry Road. The relocation would replace the current Tom Corley Place roadway at this intersection. To determine if this project has a suitable cost benefit ratio, it is necessary to complete a thorough traffic study and probable cause analysis of the concept plan. The Transportation Department is hereby requesting council to consider an expenditure in, in the amount of up to $100,000, for the study and the cost opinion would take approximately 69 months to complete. The funds could be made available from the roads and infrastructure portion of the general budget fund. Mr. Mayor, due to the fact that when I ran for office, everybody asked about that intersection, and asked about how we were gonna continue to improve traffic in Lexington, I think it's only wise that we use the money from roads and infrastructure fund to acquire some engineering and feasibility on improving that intersection. So, I make that as a motion.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Yes, sir, Mr. Stambleidis.
I'd like to point out that it was brought up for a 2014 referendum, and it was voted down. So, I think to vote against the will of the people of the Town of Lexington and Lexington County would be inappropriate.
Any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Stambleidis, Mr. Mayor-
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Are you saying the project's not a feasible project and is not needed?
No, sir, I'm not. I'm saying that this was put on a referendum in 2014. The citizens of Lexington County and the Town of Lexington overwhelmingly, 70% of them voted against this whole project with, which this was a part of. So, I think it would be wise to listen to the citizens of the Town of Lexington, Lexington County, and kind of vote in the way they wish us to vote.
They voted against a tax-
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
Sorry. They voted against a tax increase. We're not requesting any additional taxes. So, I, I don't see how we're going against the wishes of the citizens. I also believe that it's our responsibility to do everything in our power to make things happen with roads and traffic, and that we have a responsibility to make this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any further discussion?
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stambleidis.
We don't know why they voted against this particular project. You may be very well right, that this might not have been intended to be the victim of that vote, but I think further discussion would be more appropriate, and to gauge the citizens' opinions on this particular issue. Again, you're right, we do need to do something. We need to make improvements, and this may be the very best project. But I just think that it's, you know, unfortunately, it's a victim of the vote in 2014, voting against it.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Yes, sir, Mr. Carons.
I would just like to point out that the referendum was a referendum about the funding mechanism, it was not a referendum about any individual project. And so, I think to say that the voters voted against this project is a misrepresentation of the entire referendum. They did turn down the penny tax, but there were, to my recollection, 60-plus projects, and to invalidate all 60 of those projects because they voted against the funding mechanism is, I think, a mischaracterization of what happened.
I don't think we can characterize why-
Excuse me. Mr. Carons has the floor.
I'm sorry.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carons.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond one more time?
One more time, Mrs. Stambleidis.
We don't know why the citizens voted against it. They did vote against it, whether it's the mechanism, or whether the project, or their combination of both. But they did vote against it. And I was, you know, sworn to, to support the citizens of the Town of Lexington and to do what they want us to do. And this is not a statement against the project, or the will to do well. I understand that we want to do, we can improve traffic, and I do too. But this was a very controversial issue, and the citizens of the Town of Lexington and county voted against it. And I appreciate your respect on it, and I appreciate you letting me speak on it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stambledis, I respect what you're saying, but I've sat on this council almost 20 years, and it has taken us forever to get anything done for roads. And if we don't do something and go ahead and step out there, and I agree with Mr. Carons and Mr. Baker, that they didn't vote down this specific project, they voted down the tax that was being requested, and that this project too was put on that ballot when there wasn't a Fresh Market going in, or a Lowe's Foods, or any other development around there, and now you have all this development, and you're telling me you want to talk about it nine or 10 more months before we put something out there to even begin, when you know, as well as I do, that it took us 10 or 11 years to get what we got up there in front of your place? So, I don't think we can sit back and wait. I mean, I, I can't see waiting 20 more years, and I definitely don't think our citizens want us to wait 20 more years to improve the traffic over there.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live over there, and I know how bad that intersection is, and I agree. I don't think the people of Lexington voted this project down, it was number one. I think they voted down raising taxes, and I think they voted down parks and other little projects in other parts of the county that the committee thought they needed to put up to get input from the entire county. I feel like if just the roads had been on that, that we would have a different story right now. So, I don't think that they voted this down, I think they voted down raising our taxes, and I think they voted down the other little projects that have been put in there, so.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Manis. Any further discussion? Good, my turn. Let me be perfectly clear. This project was put in place, it was the number-one project on the penny sales tax out of 184 projects throughout the county. That tells you how needed this project is. I serve on the local cog here for Lexington, and the only way to get this project funded is to get it on the cog's tip list. To get it on the tip list, we have to put skin in the game. We have to do the design work. If you remember the meeting a month ago where we talked about this, this was the way to get this project on the tip list, so that when funds become available through the federal government and through the state government, this particular project would be in the driver's seat to be completed. That's the only reason we are doing this. It's not because the voters voted anything up or down, it's because we're taking a step forward to do what's right for this community. In saying that, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six to one, Madam Clerk. Our next item of new business is from councilmember Steve Baker. Appointment of Municipal Court Judge.
Judge Brian Jeffcoat was appointed to a two-year term as full-time municipal court judge in April of 2015. His appointment expires this month. Town council was asked to consider appointing him to a four-year term. By state statute, municipal court judges must be appointed to terms of two or four years. Action requested today is the appointment of Judge Brian Jeffcoat to a new four-year I make a motion to appoint.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion, so does councilmember Carons, Mayor Protem, councilmember Stambleidis, and councilmember Williams, and Mayor McDougal. We all second that motion. Do I have any discussion on the matter?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask for a point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker, go right ahead.
On behalf of mayor and council, we have a letter which we would like to present to Mr. Jeffcoat, and I will read it now. Mr. Brian, on behalf of the Town of Lexington, I would like to commend you for a job well done. Since you were appointed in April 2015, the backlog of municipal cases has improved from over 500 to less than 70. You and your staff have processed new cases while moving old cases on the docket. Over 7,000 jury trials, requests for jury trials, and traffic matters have been handled since 2015. Your commitment to resolve the town's court issues has been executed with the utmost professionalism and attention to detail. You also increased traffic court to three times a month, jury trials to three weeks out of the month, and increased preliminary hearings and bond estriements. Your understanding of the judicial system has provided the Town of Lexington with a more efficient and streamlined court system, which benefits everyone. One definition of a judge is to form an opinion through careful weighing of evidence and testing of premises. You have done that and more. The town appreciates your dedicated service, and your expertise has enhanced the reputation of your municipal court. Thank you, and I just would like to add on top of that, wow, what you've done is amazing, phenomenal job. We are blessed and encouraged to have you on staff here, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge Jeffcoat, I have been in his courtroom on a couple of different occasions, just to watch, thank heavens it's just to watch. And I encourage my councilmembers to go and watch him. He and his staff are extremely professional. For somebody to have to come to court is not a good thing, what I hear, I don't know, but just watching how he interacts with those people who have been given tickets, or have been arrested, he is, is so professional, and I am proud of you, and I am proud that you are our judge, and I look forward to sitting in your courtroom again.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. If you'd like to say anything, you are certainly welcome to. I think Mr. Poole has a comment?
I'm gonna swear, ma'am.
Okay, we're gonna come up front, we're gonna swear you in, okay?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate what you do. Yes, sir, if you don't mind, please.
They know each other.
I'd like to tell you, put your hand on your Bible, raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will-
That I will.
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend-
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will now hear announcements from councilmember Todd Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's start off with congratulations. Want to congratulate Coach Don Staley and the USC Lady Gamecocks for bringing home the national championship.
Wait a minute, can you say that one more time?
No.
I tried, y'all, I tried.
I don't want to forget the guys, want to congratulate the guys making it to the final four, great run for both schools involved. We're becoming a basketball state. We also would like to wish a happy birthday to councilmember Kathy Manis, who celebrates this Wednesday, I believe. Happy birthday to you coming up.
35.
And then, just want to remind everybody, Lexington live free concerts kicking off Thursday, April 13th, at Ice House Amphitheater, and every Thursday going forward, we'll have great weather, great times out there. Town Hall will be closed for Good Friday on April 14th. Want to wish everybody a happy Easter coming up, to the faith community of our town. Council will meet again on April 17th for a council's work session at 6 o'clock in the Eli Mack Room. Planning Commission will meet on April 19th at 8:00 a.m. here in council chambers. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, April 6th at 5:30 in council chambers, and Traffic Committee, April 5th at 8:00 a.m. Lots of meetings, we'll get some stuff done. Finally, we, we as a council, we as a town, we do want to extend our sympathies to Judge Lee Laventis and his family, and the loss of his son, Jamie, which happened just very recently, and wish them our condolences. Thank you very much for being with us tonight as a town council.
Thank you, councilmember Carons. Are there any questions from the news media? I don't think we have any news media here. Public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Any comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, thank you for watching the town council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, April 3rd, 2017.